Of uh June to order.
Ah yes, Mister Chair, I move that we dispense with items number two and number three of our uh agenda for today.
Uh it has been moved by Councilor Cyril Radock, seconded by Councilor Cisson to.
Again.
Uh dispense item number two and three in our agenda for today. Any objection? Kirinanda said uh agenda is approved. Next item, Madam Secretary. Ah sorry, this this sorry, sorry na wala ako. If there are no objections, the said two items are dispensed. Sorry. Uh Ma'am, Ma'am Luz, can you conduct the roll call? Ma'am Luz, please conduct the roll call. Di kita marinig. Di kita marinig, ma'am. Counselor Apol Bakay. Ako lang muna magreroal call, Counselor Apol Bakay.
Present, nakikita ko siya dun.
Present, okay. Counselor uh Carolyn Dixon Cisson.
Dun pumakain.
Present.
Counselor Mr. Cisson Segundera, our birthday celebrant next week. Counselor Joseito Fontelera, nakita ko siyang pumasok kanina. Counselor Cyril Radock, our Majority Floor Leader.
Present po.
Uh Counselor Verna S. D. Rabago.
Present.
Uh next is Counselor Oscar Bowling, our Minority Floor Leader.
Present.
And then uh next would be Counselor Frobel Ranoy.
Present.
And then uh next would be Counselor Dahlia De Leon. Present.
Present.
Uh next would be uh Counselor Alfred Felix de Castro, our Chairman on Lost Rules. Dyan din po siya.
Present.
Counselor Raúl Bakay. Uh pangusod ng federasyon ng kabataan, uh Counselor Loverly Bernabe.
Present po, guys.
So twelve members respond to the call. I now certify the presence of court room. We may now transact official business. We will have the agenda before we act on this. Madam Secretary, do we have an assigned business?
We have three unassigned businesses, sir. Naririnig na ako.
Yes, pasok na.
We have three unassigned businesses. The first item is proposed resolution number twenty twenty one dash eighty seven. Resolution approving the additional partial list of specific projects hundred out of the twenty percent of the account amounting to eighty two thousand two hundred four pesos. Special education fund amounting to five hundred sixty four thousand four hundred seventy three pesos. And special purpose appropriation amounting to one million fifty two thousand one hundred twelve pesos of the city of Alaminos for calendar year twenty twenty two. The next item is resolution coming from these all members uh of this august body. Extend the profound sympathy of the people of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan. Headed by the city officials and employees of the local government unit Alaminos City. To the family and friends of the late former board member Qfilo G. Humilde Junior for his untimely demise. And lastly, proposed uh proposed resolution number twenty twenty one dash eighty eight. Resolution favorably endorsing to the Office of Secretary Ramon M. López. Of the Department of Trade uh Department of Trade and Industry, the request of the city government. Of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan for funding assistance for the replacement of muna pangapisan bridge situated at Parangay Pangapisan District.
Any other unassigned business po from the body? Any uh may mga gusto po bang magdagdag or magpropose? Okay, wala po?
Uh yes, Mister Chair, uh in addition to the proposed resolution.
Ma'bi na sa lang kayo makakawas.
Uh expressing our deep sympathy to the bereaved family of. Former board member.
Pwede mo nga si ano.
G. Humilde uh I would like.
Si si Kaso ano sa pa ba?
Uh pwedeng taki mute Counselor Fontelera. Di kita mamute eh. Wait. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Counselor de Castro.
Yes, uh Mister Chair, uh in addition.
Maraming sumasabay eh. Hindi ka rin.
To our staff, uh can you please uh. Con uh please Counselor Fontelera to mute his. I can't seem to mute his uh. Di ko siya mamute kahit admin na. Anyway, go ahead.
Yes, uh in addition to the profound sympathy of the people of the city of Alaminos uh in expressing uh their uh. Uh condolences to the bereaved family of former board member Qfilo G. Humilde Junior for his untimely demise. May I likewise include uh the persons who have also. Form part of the pillars of the city of Alaminos in their unfathomable contribution particularly. Madame Gloria I. Montoya and uh Jaime B. Jaime Boy B. Junior. That they be likewise included for a proposed resolution, Mister Chair.
Okay, uh so any other unassigned business be proposed by the body? Okay, uh.
With that, Mister Chair, may I uh move for the approval of today's agenda. Including the three unassigned businesses to be approved by the August Body, Mister Chair.
I see good, Mister Chair.
Right, it's been moved by Counselor de Castro, the Chairman of Lost Rules, and seconded by our Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Radock. Who include the said three unassigned businesses plus uh two resolutions. Identifying uh uh two resolutions of uh condolences and uh certain. So any objection, any amendment? Kirinanda said the five unassigned businesses are uh hereby included in our uh agenda. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Adoption of the journals and minutes, sangguyang pagluluto regular sessions held on June one, twenty twenty one, and June eight, twenty twenty one.
Any motion? Wait, sorry. Any motion? Counselor Bernabe, seconded.
Mister Presiding Officer, I move for the adap.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Uh namute kita, sorry. Go ahead.
I move for the adoption of the journals and minutes of the SP regular sessions held on June one, twenty twenty one, and June eight, twenty twenty one.
It's been moved by Counselor Bernabe, seconded by Counselor Segundera and Counselor Rabago for the adoption of the said journal and minutes. Any objection? And seconded by Counselor De Leon as well. Any amendments? Kirinanda said journal minutes are adopted. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Privilege question hour.
Uh any privilege speeches from the body? Uh any concerns, problems, or observations po sa ating lungsod na pwede po nating pagtuonan ng pansin or pwedeng mai-discuss ngayong araw? Okay, wala po. Okay, we then now proceed. Madam Secretary.
Now we proceed to our reference of business. Under proposed resolution, we have proposed resolution number one, number twenty twenty one dash eighty six. Resolution confirming the appointment of Mister Eduardo A. Aglibot Junior as City Assessor of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan. Effective June one, twenty twenty one. And proposed resolution number twenty twenty one dash eighty five, resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Brian C. Celeste. To enter into memorandum of agreement by and among the city government of Alaminos Pangasinan. The Department of Agriculture Regional Field Office One and Agriculture and Fishery Council for the provision of farm machinery equipment. Two units of hand tractor to the city government of Alaminos Pangasinan under the bamboo industry development program. Which is a component of Bayanihan to recover as one act or the Bayanihan two. And lastly, proposed resolution number twenty twenty one dash eighty four. Resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Brian C. Celeste to enter into memorandum of agreement by and between the city. Government of the city of Alaminos Pangasinan and the Department of Labor and Employment for the implementation of the one million. Grant for establishment of motorcycle spare parts and accessories and vulcanizing shop. To the one hun- uh to the Hundred Islands Toda Federation.
Okay, um so do we have guests? Uh shall we suspend the rules?
Yes, Mister Chair, I move that we suspend our internal rules to accommodate our guests.
It's removed by Counselor Cyril Radock, seconded by Counselor Cisson for the suspension of the internal rules to accommodate our guests. Madam Secretary, please acknowledge the guests that are here with us today in our Zoom session.
For our item number one, of course, we have our dashing, dashing newly appointed. Newly appointed uh City Assessor, Mister Eduardo A. Aglibot Jun- Junior. And for our uh proposed resolution, uh next proposed resolution number twenty twenty one dash eighty five, we have. Uh Mister Jester Tulintino and. Sir, Mister Jester Tulintino, sir. And for the last uh item. For the one million grant to the Hundred uh Hundred Islands Toda Federation, we have Sir Solomon Tablang.
Okay, so uh we should start with item number one. We would like to welcome Sir Eduardo Aglibot, our dashing department head. As per Maglu's vale, magandang hapon po sa inyo, sir?
Good afternoon. Ah, delicate.
Uh so anyway, uh nandito po tayo para iconfirm po ang inyong. Uh appointment sa sangguyan. Uh para po mas makilala po sana po kayo ng buong council. Ayan, pwede po ba kayo magbigay ng background niyo po, kung paano po kayo nagsimula, at saka some uh important things or. Kumbaga, things about yourself po as a employee ng gobyerno po. Yes, Ed.
Um one on one po, uh magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Uh good afternoon po sa ating futuristic and pinakamamahal na City Vice Mayor. Uh Jose Antonio Miguel May Pérez, sir. Na sa ating masisipag. Nagagandahan at nagbago po ang City Councilors ng ating siyudad. Magandang hapon po. Ma'am, sir, December sa ating pinakamabait na SP Secretary. Nag-iisa, ma'am. Uh magandang ah sa lahat po ng nandito po ngayon, uh magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. And I hope po i. I pakilala ang aking sarili. Ako po si Eduardo Aglibot Junior, thirty five years old. From Lukap, Alaminos City, sir. Magkapitbahay lang kami ni Counselor Bernabe. Pero um deciding po ako ngayon sa buhay, sir. Um. Um sixteen years na rin po ako dito sa ating lokal lamalamalan. I hope po sanang ipagpatuloy ang aking pagserbisyo sa ating mga kababayan. Bilang assessor ng ating siyudad. Kung di pong mamarapatin, ihingin po po sanang inyong. Pahintulot o confirmation para po sa ating appointment. At makakaasa po kayo na ipagpatuloy po natin na ibigay ang serbisyo na nananapat para po sa ating mga kababayan. Ang among po salamat. Kung may mga katanungan, sir, pwede po ako.
Okay, uh any questions from the body? Any words of advice or any clarifications to our uh to Sir Aglibot? Anyone?
Oo, ako, guys, wala na pong tanong sa kanya. Kilala naman natin eh. Gusto ko, apun na lang natin 'yung resolution in confirm in this appointment.
Salamat po, salamat po.
So, Sir Ed, so in behalf of the Sangguyang Pakunang Solida City Council, uh congratulations po in advance. Uh.
Thank you po, thank you po.
Matulungan niyo rin po 'yung ating city at ang ating sangguyan. So mga, I think ngayon marami po tayong mga. Uh measures like 'yung sa land titling, 'yung rules of reclassification. And uh 'yung mga improvements pa natin sa city para maging maganda po 'yung ating lungsod.
Ah, yes, yes po, bye. Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir. Igawin po natin.
Go dinyo dun po sa ating mga gagawin at uh maganda. Masaya po kami na. Na gagawin niyo po 'yung kaya niyo para matuloy po 'yung serbisyo po sa ating kaya.
Yes, yes, sir, thank you. Yes, po, gagawin po natin lang, sir, para po sa ating mga kababayan.
Yes, sir. So kung may concerns lang po 'yung councilors, uh. Uh siguro, kontakin na lang rin po nila kayo para at least uh direkta rin po kayo na.
Yes, sir, uh direct po, open po ang aking telephone number.
Wala, salamat din po sa lahat po ng tulong na niyo sa sa amin din at sa aming sangguyan sa iba't ibang. Mahiring po natin at ordinancees po natin. Thank you po.
Thank you po, thank you po, thank you po sa lahat, sir. Thank you po, sir.
Uh um. Man Dahlia, Counselor Dahlia, anything? Oh, wala po. Okay, thank you, sir.
I.
Thank you po, bye.
For uh.
Yes, Counselor Dahlia.
Okay, sir, Aglibot.
Ayan, oh, sige go.
Sir, ready muna po 'yung jelly bean namin.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Thank you po, thank you po.
Ay, joking lang kayo, joking lang. Uh parang ano lang. So, one time. Sabi ni, sa amin ni Sir Ed, sinabay na niya 'yung handa niya dun nung nagblessing tayo.
Ayan nga po, sir, eh. Nagisabay na pa ako dun.
Sinabay na niya 'yung ano niya, 'yung pasasalamat niya sa atin.
Ayan, patatalamat po. Salamat po, bye.
Maraming salamat po. Salamat po, God bless.
Thank you, thank you, po.
Okay, uh.
Uh.
Next item, Madam Secretary, we proceed to.
Ah.
Ma'am Luz. We would like to acknowledge.
Okay, po.
For item numbers two, sir, we have uh Sir Jester Tulintino from our city agriculture office.
Okay, Sir Jester, are you here?
No.
Hi, magandang hapon, Sir Jester.
Oo. So magandang hapon po sa, uh sa pangmukhang palang hapon sa lahat po, sa ating August Body. At headed po, headed by our City Vice Mayor Anton Pérez. Sangan mo pagpalang hapon po sa lahat.
Salamat, salamat. Uh meron po tayong resolution dito na regarding. Sa DA at saka ang ating city. Uh pwede po kung, pwede niyo po bang i- ano to, ibigyan kami ng brief back. Brief background para mong alam po ng ating council. Lalo na po ang ating chairperson, Counselor.
Yes, po. Uh ang Alaminos pumuli ay pinagpala at um. Makakarisma, makakatanggap po uli tayo mula po sa Department of Agriculture. So ito po ay isang programa po ng patungkol po sa Bamboo Industry Development Program. Under po ng Bayanihan two, ano po, at ito po ay under ng High Value Crafts Development Program. So ang kawayan po ngayon, ang bamboo po ay nakaunter na po sa High Value Crafts Development Program. Nang programa po ng Department of Agriculture. So tayo po ay bibigyan ng Department of Agriculture ng dalawang. Hand tractor para po mag-support po sa ating bamboo industry po.
Bayanihan, diba? Oo.
Hmm, okay. Yun lang po ang ano, uh magbibigay lang po sila at wala po tayong counter.
So actually, uh may component pa po yon. Uh may component pa na ibibigay mga siblings, mga buto ng mongo para po dun sa high value crafts. Pero dun sa mowa, ang specific na ibibigay sa atin is more on dun sa farm mechanization po nila. So 'yung dalawang hand tractor.
Oo.
So yun lang po 'yung naka-especific dun sa mowa natin.
Okay, I think it's self-explanatory. Any questions from the body?
Uh yes, Mister Chair, uh according to Jester, ang ibigay natin to eh. Parang pinupagkit natin 'yung bamboo. Pero may ordenas sa tayong. We have an ordinance, penalizing the selling or uh ano, stealing or bamboo shoots 'yung labong. Meron na pa tayong.
Actually, wala pa, sir.
May nakuhulog na ba kayo mga nagmanagnakang labong dyan?
Uh sa pagkakalang ko, sir, wala pa naman po.
Wala pa.
Pero kung is strengthinin natin 'yung ordinance na patungkol po doon, maganda po sanang implement para ma-inforce. Or kung meron po, uh sana makagawa pa po ng ordinance ah, kung meron na po siya. Para ma-inforce po natin dito sa uh siyudad ng Alaminos 'yung. Uh mapagpaparami ng labong at kawayan dito sa siyudad ng Alaminos.
Pero sa palengke, maraming nagtitinda na labong eh. Kinikisyo pa natin 'yung mga yon kung saan ang galing.
So hindi ko pa po nacheck 'yung ordinance ah, sir, kung merong 'yung bawal magbenta or bawal ano.
Sige, okay.
Sa market na po kasi 'yung ano, 'yung incharge na mga yon.
Po to our secretary, maybe, maybe we could lift from the archives our. This or the specific ordinance and check uh what we can do to improve it.
Okay.
Uh I believe the bamboo, we've been start, we started this bamboo industry way back. Pero medyo minsan na hindi natin napu-push ng sobra, but this will be a good alternative livelihood for our farmers. So we'll work that. Uh I'm sure Counselor Ranoy would be willing to spearhead the the said uh. Uh measures for the bamboo industry in our city, especially we have ikawayan already.
Yes, po.
Any question, other questions? Wala na. Thank you very much, uh Sir Jester Tulintino. Magandang hapon po, sir.
Maraming salamat po sa lahat.
Okay, wala namang. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Salamat po, bye.
Salamat, salamat.
Salamat po.
Uh for our next item will be our, for the mowa, with the Department of Labor and Employment. I have seen here Sir Solomon Tabla.
Okay, uh we would like to acknowledge Sir Solomon Tabla, the City Cooperative Officer, sir. Nakamute po. Sir, so nakamute po.
Good afternoon.
Yan.
Uh good afternoon to the members of the August Body headed by our proactive Vice Mayor, Jose Antonio Miguel Pérez.
Good afternoon, sir. So uh we have your uh. Uh proposed resolution for the memorandum of agreement of this project with Dole. Could you give us a brief background po, kung ano po itong proyekto nito?
Yes, yes po, uh Presiding Officer. So once again, we are very pleased to. That the Department of Labor and Employment Region One Office headed by our Regional Director Attorney Evelyn Ramos. Will give another one million worth of project intended for our Hundred Islands Toda Federation. For the establishment of the motorcycle spare parts and accessories and vulcanizing shop. So on this matter, may request to our, to our August Body headed by our Vice Mayor. To please authorize our City Mayor Art Brian Celeste to enter into memorandum of agreement. By and between the city government of Alaminos Pangasinan and the Department of Labor and Employment for the implementation of the said project. So why thought the Federation was chosen as the beneficiary of this program? So we know that one of the affected sectors of our society due to the pandemic are our drivers and operators. So in the city. So in Alaminos, under the Hundred Islands Toda Federation, we have more than three thousand five hundred bicycle drivers/operators. So we decide of likely who we will establish a retail store for motorcycle spare parts and accessories and vulcanizing shop. So we could help them. So products to be sold is lower in price compared to the market and what. Whatever the income they will earn will use for the Federation. So. The counterpart of the LGU is twenty percent of the grant. So in our proposal. The twenty percent of the one million is the two hundred thousand. So the two hundred thousand counterpart is allotted for the enhancement or capability training for our beneficiaries. So among the trainings identified are the Business Enterprise Entrepreneurship Seminar, Pricing and Posting. Basic Bookkeeping and Accounting, Motorcycle Spare uh Engine Servicing, Customer Right Awareness Seminar Guide. Values Formations and Organizational Development. So on the part of the beneficiaries. The Hundred Islands Toda Federation, this share are the buildings and other operational costs include the permit and licenses. So this is the rationale why the uh Hundred Islands Toda Federation was chosen. As the beneficiary of this program.
Thank you very much for that very comprehensive and informative uh presentation, Sir Sol. Any questions from the body? May makatanungan po ba tayo?
Uh yes, Mister Chair.
Yes, Counselor de Castro.
Nakakuhan ko lang, I'm just bothered because uh. Sa Hundred Islands Toda, 'yung may ibang uh toda nila. Nakaron ng maraming problema, particularly sa accounting ng mga contributions nila at uh kung ano-ano pa. Uh. Would that not be a hindrance or uh. A question of speculation later on again to the numerous members of the set toda. Sa pagbigay ng grant na ito. I am not against this grant. In fact, I am very much willing to support. Kinakan ko lang is uh, I am hoping that they could trash out their differences because uh. Uh itong uh ini-spearhead ni Sol ngayon is a very. Vital and very nice and very supportive sa kanilang association. Pagdating kasi sa pera, medyo nagiging magulot 'yung mga toda. So I hope Sol, you can guide them properly para. Mapalago nila ito. Uh I, this is out, this is off tangent of this discussion, but uh. I hope uh. Tulungan mo sila and I am very glad for this grant again. So please guide them accordingly. Yun lang naman na- na comment.
Yes, po, Counselor. Actually, ito rin po 'yung ginawa po namin, strategy din po. Nung nagsisimula din po 'yung ating po empowered person with disabilities. Nanabigyan din po ng grant po from the Dole. 'Yung establishment po ng kanila pong our one-stop shop po dun sa Lukap. So hindi po namin sila iniwan hangga't hindi po naayos 'yung operation po nila. Talagang ginabayan din po namin talaga sila. Ito rin po 'yung gagawin din po namin kasi. Uh may monitoring po tayong gagawin po dito na hindi naman po natin sila papabayan basta-basta na sinalang po 'yung magma-manage. Kasama po rin po natin. Meron kasi tayong uh grupo na.
Uh.
Project management team na tutuktok po dun sa uh association po, especially in the implementation po ng mga programs po nito. So we identified naman kung sino 'yung magiging manager, sino 'yung magiging cashier. So meron sa organizational structure po nila. Naidentify na po natin sino 'yung mga tatao. So meron na rin po tayong naidentify na mga trainings. Eh enhancement capability training na pwedeng tumulong po sa kanila para maayos po nila 'yung kanilang uh. Pamamalakad. So ito po ay magre-register din po sila sa BIR. So napaka-importante po rin talaga na maayos kasi. Uh ayaw din natin later on na magkaroon din po sila ng problema.
Okay, uh I am very glad to hear that, Sol, and hopefully you will always be. Aninan with them towards their progress particularly their association. Maraming salamat, sir.
Thank you po, thank you po.
Questions from the body?
Uh yes, Mister Chair.
Yes, Counselor Cyril Radock.
Di ba dalawa ang kuhan natin dito Federation ng toda sa Alaminos? Dalawa ata, ano?
Yes, po, sir. Meron po tayong pak toda at saka hit uh at saka 'yung Hundred Island Toda po.
Ibig sabihin, kung member ka nito, halimbawa 'yung sa accessories, hindi ka na pwedeng, uh sa, sa Hundred Islands Toda ha, itong makakatanggap ng grant. Kung member ka dyan. Kailangan ba ipaturnize mo 'yung, 'yung product ng, ng toda?
Ini-encourage po namin po talaga, nipaturnize po 'yung product po nila kasi wala naman pong iba na tutulong para mapalago po 'yung kanilang uh. Business, kunhi rin po 'yung mga members din po.
Ayun nga. Di ba pwedeng, bawal bumili sa labas o dapat bumili ka doon? Parang ko tiratiba, di ba? Parang sa, sa map ko di.
Pwede po natin po gawin po yun as one of their policies po, uh sir.
Oo, di ba? Siguro isa sa mga suggestion natin 'yung ganun. Ayun lang.
Thank you po.
So uh any other questions from the body? Sir Sol, matanong ko lang, 'yung kayo na banggit niyo, one million po ibibigay ng Dole and then meron po tayong counterpart na two hundred thousand, tama po ba?
Opo, 'yung counterpart naman po natin po uh.
Training.
Mister Chair, ay ito po 'yung mga trainings na po ibibigay po natin. Hindi naman po in the form of money. So. Sa office po natin, may mga latted budget naman po tayo for the capability training. So dun na lang po natin siya kukunin po.
So the, just to clarify, pinapatanong ko sino 'yung Ma'am Luz, is 'yung two hundred thousand mga galing po sa capability trainings ng office po ninyo, tama po ba?
Opo, sir, opo.
Thank you very much for that. And then, 'yung sa monitoring and management team, sila-sila na ba yon, sir? O parang meron from your office na magmo-monitor?
Meron po from our office po, sir. Uh ang composition po niya ay ang City Cooperatives Office, ang peso, at ang Dole po mismo, sir.
Ah, okay, okay.
At saka 'yung PRO po.
Ah, okay, okay. So.
Anong, anong klaseng training 'yung ibibigay ng city sa kanila?
Sir, meron, meron po kaming walo na naidentified po na trainings. Uh yun, uh ito po 'yung uh. Basic entrepreneurship training, pricing and posting, uh. Uh basic bookkeeping and accounting, motorcycle servicing engines uh training. 'Yung ating customer uh service training, 'yung ating values formation, 'yung organizational development po.
Okay. Sir Sol, I don't know if it's a one suggestion na ano, since I don't know if it's related or you can. Okay. Sir Sol, I don't know if it's a one suggestion na ano, since, uh, I don't know if it's related or you can include it. Kasi di ba, ang alam ko 'yung trainings is related dun sa pagtayo nila ng motorcycle and spare parts shop, di ba? Kung pwede naman mag-integrate po ng, kasi nga, since we are a tourism, uh, city, uh, baka pwede rin na, kung, kung pwede naman maginclude ng ibang trainings na how to deal with your customers, or other tourists, or 'yung mga hotel, mga ganun, para at least, uh, magbebenefit din 'yung ating mga hotels and transient sa Lukap. Just a suggestion na naman, I don't know kung dyan 'yung...
Yes po, 'yung customer service training po, sir. Include po namin po 'yun.
Apo, apo. Tourist. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, kung wala na pong tanong, thank you po, thank you very much to our City Cooperatives Officers, Sir Solomontabla. Sir, maraming salamat.
Thank you so much din po, sir.
Okay. So, we... We proceed, Madam Secretary. Uh, to, we proceed to under unassigned business para direkto tayo under suspension of internal rules. We have, uh... Under unassigned business, okay?
Under unassigned business, we have the resolution approving the additional priorities.
Excuse me, sorry, excuse me. Tinabasa mo naman kanina, okay lang. So, with regard to item number one, uh, do we have any questions regarding this? Because mostly will be, most are barangay initiated naman, wala naman, siguro. Any question?
Thank you, Mister K. Wala naman na kuwan natin dito, uh, syrup exploratory naman. Uh, I will move later na it will be included in our business of the day.
Okay, actually, pati 'yung two and three. Okay, so we will now lift for, lift the suspension rules. So, what is the pleasure of the body regarding item number... Uh, one? Maybe Counselor, uh, De Leon, our, uh, Chairperson on Labor? Counselor Dahlia, shall we include in the business of the day? Okay, unmute po, ma'am. Yan. Ay, sa pa?
Uh, this resolution will be, uh, included for the business of the day.
Okay, it has been moved by Counselor De Leon, seconded by Counselor Rabago, Counselor Apple Bakay, Counselor Mister Segundera, Counselor Season, Counselor Bernabe, Counselor De Castro, to include the said resolution in the bus, in the business of the day for deliberation. So, ordered. So, next item, uh, what is the pleasure regarding item number one? Counselor Ranoy, Chairman on Agriculture. Counselor Ranoy?
Uh, Mister, uh, Presiding Officer, I move that the matter be limited to the business of the day for deliberation.
Uh, isama ko na rin 'yung number three, kasi cooperatives karen, di ba? Counselor Ranoy.
Yes, Mister Chair.
So, Counselor Ranoy moves to include item number two and number three under proposed resolutions in the business of the day for deliberation. Any second to that? Seconded by Counselor Segundera,
Second.
Counselor Rabago, Counselor Redoc, and Counselor Apple Bakay, Counselor Season, and Counselor De Leon. Any objection? Hiring na the said two items are included in the business of the day. Under unassigned business, Majority Leader.
On assigned business, uh...
Yung katla na lang, siguro?
'Yung, 'yung mga kuwan. Yes, Mister Chair, I, those under unassigned business, I move that they be limited to the business of the day for deliberation.
It's been moved by Counselor Cyril Redoc, seconded by Counselor, uh, De Castro, Counselor Segundera, and Counselor Season to include the said five resolutions in the business of the day for approval. So, ordered. So, Madam Secretary, next item?
I proceed to the committee reports. The first item is joint committee report of the hearing held on May twenty eighth regarding the resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Brian C. Celeste to enter into memorandum of partnership agreement in behalf of the City government of the City of Alaminos Pangasinan with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources Regional Office One for the implementation of the public land titling program in the city.
Uh, I believe hindi yata na tuloy ito, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Sige, can you just read also the, so that, that committee report plus the reclassification of two properties and...
Including the review of barangay budgets, Mister Chair, I was not able to, uh, conduct committee hearing.
All right, all right. So, Counselor Redoc, when do you want to reschedule the...
I, uh, I am scheduling a, uh, committee hearing on Wednesday, Mister Chair. Ano bang date ng Wednesday? Sunod?
Bukas? Uh, sixteen twenty-three, next week?
Twenty-three. Next week, next week na, twenty-three.
So, what time po?
Nine, nine o'clock, including the, uh, the dialogue with barangay officials for, uh, the delineation of barangay boundaries. Magkasunod na lang po.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, Counselor Redoc, the Chairman on Finance, schedule sa committee hearing regarding the said uh, measure, barangay budgets, at nine o'clock in the morning on June twenty-three. And regarding the settlement of dispute of barangay boundaries.
Uh, Mister Chair, ten o'clock, at then ten thirty, the other one?
All right, all right. So, the budget is ten o'clock in the morning,
Yes, Mister Chair.
and the boundary disputes is ten thirty in the morning, both on June twenty-three in our, uh, Sanggulang Pongong Session Hall, uh, Spagung Bubid po. So, so ordered. So, with regard to item number one, 'yung land titling, magkakasama ba to, Mamulus? Land titling, reclassification?
Po, sir, 'yung land titling, land titling at saka 'yung, uh, for sure, presentation of pasture agad development plan kay Mam Michelle.
'Yung, 'yung magkasama.
Yes po, 'yung...
So, Counselor Fontelera, are you there? Counselor Fontelera?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Yes. Counselor Michelle, go ahead.
Yes, um, mukhang dalawa po kami ni Counselor Fontelera po dyan.
When do you want us to reschedule the, the said, uh, measure?
Um, we would like to reschedule it on June twenty-three at nine in the morning, Mister Chair.
Okay, so which, which, which measure is this one? This is the land titling? Anong measure yun?
Land titling.
Land titling, okay. Counselor...
Yes, Mister Chair, um, land...
On, uh, environment alongside with, uh, Counselor Fontelera, the Chairman on Land Use, schedules of committee hearing regarding the said ordinance, resolution for the land titling on June, June twenty-three, nine o'clock in the morning.
In the morning.
Ordered.
Thank you po.
And then, ang next po natin is 'yung, uh, reclassification, tama po ba, Mamulus? Of two, or, body, two parcels of land. Counselor Fontelera, are you there? Or Counselor De Castro?
Uh, yes, Mister Chair, uh, I just, uh, scheduled the reclassification of the said two parcels of land on June twenty-one at two o'clock in the afternoon.
Counselor De Castro, schedule sa committee hearing regarding the said ordinance on June twenty-one, two o'clock in the afternoon.
Yes.
Ordered. So, next item, next pa, Mamsec, meron pa ba?
'Yung handling of children, sir, item number five.
Also rescheduled?
Yes po.
Okay, Counselor Season? Tama? Counselor Carol, are you there? Uh, who is the, ito, let us wait for.
Actually, sir, nagbigay na siya ng advanced schedule sa akin, as per instructions.
Okay, when did he, when did she want?
Ten o'clock in the morning, sir.
Kailan po?
Ito, June thirty, sir, ten A M.
Okay, uh, as per advance information, Counselor Carol schedules a committee hearing on June thirty.
Public hearing, sir.
Uh, a public hearing on June thirty, two o'clock in the morning. So, Counselor Carol is in?
Yes.
So, ordered, June thirty, uh, public hearing, okay. Next item, how about the Penro presentation, ma'am? Any update with that?
Sir, uh, this is an unbanked presentation, which is, uh, ang suggestion po ni Mam Michelle. Counselor Segundera will be on June twenty-two at, uh, two o'clock in the afternoon before your regular session.
Oh, we can do that. Uh, naka, nag-coordinate na ba sila?
Yes, sir. Actually, meron na po silang pinadala mga, uh, salient features ng plant. I have already furnished, uh, copies sa offices po ninyo.
Okay, okay. So, just prepare na if we're gonna do Zoom or, uh, face-to-face, just, uh, make sure that, uh, they can do both. In case na the body decides to do Zoom or face-to-face. So, Counselor Michelle moves to schedule, uh, the presentation and un, under unbanked, uh, committee hearing on June twenty-two. Two P ilang before our Sanggulang Pongong Session, the regular session. So, ordered. Uh, any comments from the body? Meron pa? Any concerns? Okay. Next item, Madam Secretary.
I proceed to the business of the day. Under new business, we have the second reading of the ordinance reclassifying a parcel of land declared under Tax Declaration Number twenty-eighteen, this thirty-five, the zero-zero-eight, zero-four, containing an area four thousand six hundred forty square meters, registered under the name of Sheila V. Alfonso, married to Jewel P. Mariano from agricultural use of commercial.
Any motion? Mister Chair, I move that the said matter be scheduled for third and final reading on the next, uh, scheduled regular session.
This will be moved by Counselor Alfred Felix De Castro, any second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Redoc, Counselor Rabago, Counselor Segundera, Counselor De Leon, for the, for the, Counselor Fontelera for, uh, to calendar the said ordinance for third and final reading in our next regular session. Any objection? Hearing na the said ordinance is calendared for third and final reading in our next regular session. Next item?
Second reading of the codification of general ordinances.
So, with this, um, I was able to talk to the secretary, and they will be needing three more weeks, so let us defer this to three weeks from now, to our regular session three weeks from now. The target of this codification is to codify all ordinances up until June thirty, twenty, twenty-one. So, next item, Madam Secretary.
Second reading of the proposed ordinance providing for establishment of bicycle lanes, shared gains and bicycle facilities in relation there to and providing funds there.
Uh, Counselor Rabago, will you, will you able to talk to Counselor Bakay, what the action for this will be? Wala naman.
Ang kompletong na ito eh.
Ay, wala naman po. Kompletong sa akin.
Pero kompleto na po ba ito? Parang ba ito?
Pero kung, kay Mamulus, kompleto na po ba? Sir, uh, actually, for review, parang po namin yan, kasi ang kapal po ng provisions of ordinance, so I suggest it, uh, August Body would, with, uh, ano na lang po, opinion po.
Another second reading, Mister Chair.
All right, Counselor Cyril Redoc, and, uh, the first, the said, uh, ordinance for another second reading in our reg, regular session two weeks from now, so ordered. Uh, next item, Madam Secretary.
Second reading of the proposed ordinance localizing the provisions of Republic Act one, one-three-one-three, otherwise known as the Safe Spaces Act in the City of Alaminos Pangasinan.
Counselor Carol?
Uh, yes, Mister Chair. Uh, kung pwede rin po pa defer muna for another two weeks, kasi hindi pa po namin na review 'yung draft dahil naka-quarant.
Okay. How are you? I hope you're doing okay?
Okay naman po.
Counselor Season moves to defer the said ordinance in our next regular session for second reading two weeks from now. So, ordered. Uh, next item?
Third and final, uh, ano?
Mga unassigned businesses.
Item is, uh, resolution confirming the appointment of Mister Eduardo A. Aglibot Junior as City Assessor of the City of Alaminos Pangasinan, effective June one, twenty-twenty-one.
Any motion? Counselor, uh, De Leon, the Chairperson on Labor?
Uh, yes, Mister, uh, Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of the resolution.
Second.
Counselor De Leon, seconded by Counselor Cyril Redoc, Counselor
Again.
Counselor Rabago, Counselor De Castro, Counselor Ranoy, Counselor Apple Bakay, Counselor Bernabe, for the, and Counselor Season, for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Amendment, discretion, hearing na, the said resolution is hereby adopted. Congratulations to Sir Eduardo Aglibot, our new, uh, appointed and confirmed, uh, City Assessor. So, next item, Madam Secretary.
Resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Brian C. Celeste to enter into memorandum of agreement by and among the City, City Government of Alaminos Pangasinan, the Department of Agricultural, Agricultural Regional Health Office One, and Agriculture and Fishery Council for the provision of two units of hand tractors to the City Government of Alaminos Pangasinan under the Bamboo Industry Development Program, which is a component of Bayanihan to recover as one act or the Bayanihan two.
Counselor Robert Ranoy, the Chairman on Agriculture?
Yes, uh, Mister Chair, I, I move for the approval of the said matter.
It has been moved by Counselor Robert Ranoy, seconded by Counselor Redoc, Counselor Segundera, Counselor De Leon for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing na, the said resolution is hereby adopted. Wala namang counterpart 'yan, Mamulus, okay lang.
Wala.
Go ahead, uh, next item?
Next item is the resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Brian C. Celeste to enter into memorandum of agreement by and between the City Government of the City of Alaminos Pangasinan and the Department of Labor Unemployment for the implementation of the one million pesos grant for establishment of motorcycle spare parts and accessories and vulcanizing shop to the Hundred Islands Toda Federation.
Before we, uh, deliberate, meron lang ako two concerns, just to comment lang, di ko lang alam kung anong magiging action natin is. Number one, dapat ba kasama ang City Councilor dun sa management or monitoring team? O bahala na sila cooperatives officer? And number two, siguro 'yung sa Federation, so should we do it specifically for one Federation lang or for two? Kasi siyempre, magkakaanuhan 'yan, di ba?
Eh, 'yung tanong ko kanina eh. Eh, tinatanong, di ba? Dalawa Federation natin dito?
Oo, parang, well, baka pareho namang tricycle, pero hindi rin naman pwedeng silang dalawa, kasi they should be under one management, kumbaga. Eh, kung iba 'yung baylos nila, iba 'yung magiging, ano, but the problem is paano naman 'yung kabilang Federation, di ba?
Ayun nga po. Kaya ko, kaya ko tinanong kanina, di ba?
Any, 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 ano, any comment to that? Eh, ano bang tingin natin? Or should we just leave it to them? Because, uh, they've been doing this naman for the past, uh, few projects. Counselor Ranoy? Counselor Ranoy, what is your pleasure? Chairman on Cooperatives, shall we approve, kung wala naman tayong suggestion or anything?
Kung, kung, kung walang Mister Chair, i-approve na lang natin, bahala na silang mag...
Actually, I think they have the reason, they have the reason.
Si grant naman eh, grant eh. Kung hindi natin i-approve ito, sayang naman 'yung grant.
That's true, that's true.
So, sayang din eh.
Ay, nakikita kong gulo, laman naman 'yung gulo dyan sa dalawa, di ba? Magkakaanuhan.
Pang, pangit, pangit na 'yung next project, 'yun na mabubunta naman sa faculty naman siguro.
Counselor Ranoy?
Uh, I move for the approval of this matter, second.
Gusto mo ba maging part ng, ano, monitoring team o hindi na, hindi na?
Ah, ayer ap 'yun.
It has been moved by, uh,
Raisi kalan 'yan.
Counselor Robert Ranoy, any second? Seconded by Counselor Apple Bakay, Counselor Segundera, Counselor De Leon, and Counselor Season, and Counselor Fontelera, for the adoption of the said resolution. Objection? Hearing na, the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Ito, wait it mo.
Resolution approved for the additional partial leave, of the given projects, which is about a hundred percent development plan, amount sixty-three thousand four
Ano na?
four pesos, special education plan, amount fifty-five to sixty-four thousand four hundred seventy-three pesos, and special purpose application, amount fifteen-one, fifty-two thousand one hundred twelve pesos of the city of Alaminos.
Yes, Mister Chair, I move that the matter be adopted.
It's been moved by Counselor Redoc, seconded by, any second? Counselor Bakay, Counselor Segundera, Counselor Rabago, Counselor Ranoy, Counselor Season, Counselor De Castro, for the adoption of the, Counselor Ranoy, for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing na, the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item?
Resolution to board reinforcing the Department of Trade and Industries Secretary, number eight, Longes, for funding assistance and replacement of one of the pangabisan bridges, weighted in barangay Pangabitan, City.
Counselor, uh, D T I, uh, infra, Counselor Fontelera, infrastructure? Shall you approve?
Uh, approval, the said, uh, resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Counselor...
Second.
Yes?
You will not, you will not get the opinion of Counselor Kajopong Teler on the matter, uh, Mister Chair?
Well, I think he's, uh, having a technical difficulty, that's why, uh, impact po po'to 'yung... So, Counselor Fontelera, the Chairman on Infrastructure, uh, moves to for the adoption of the said resolution, any second? Seconded by Counselor Rabago, Counselor... Seconded by Councilor Rabago, Councilor Segundera, Councilor Sezon, Councilor Apol Bakay, with a spirit. Okay.
May ka-check ka daw.
Any amendments? Hearing none, the said.
Naka-quarantin ka mo, pati si Upan siya. Meron ba kano, di ba? Si Upan siya?
Uh, before we move, uh, I would like to invite, uh. The August badi to. To make, uh, to give way for a moment of silence, need, uh. Thirty-second silence to, to remember former vice mayor and board member. Jofilo Humilde. A moment of silence, please. Okay, uh, any motion?
Yes, uh. Mister Chair, I move that the said, uh, matter be approved by the August badi.
Second.
Moved by Councilor De Castro, Julie seconded by Councilor Adok, Councilor Segundera. Uh, can I second, second by all? Seconded by all? For the adoption of the said resolution. Any amendments? It's just fix the, the wording of the resolution. Uh, it's just discussed. I'm not sure if we should use, uh. Ano ba, profound ba or deepest? Because, um, let me check the. Check my thesaurus for a, for a, for a bit. Okay, uh, any amendments? Hearing none, the said resolution is hereby adopted. Uh, condolences to the family of, uh. Uh, for, of former board member Humilde. Okay, uh, next item, Madam Secretariat?
Uh, item, uh, same, uh, the resolution. For the community of, uh. Our employee, uh, city government, co-employees, Madam Gloria, Madam Gloria, and Mister Jaime.
Okay, any motion?
Yes, uh, Mister Chair, I likewise move for the approval of the said resolution to the. Brave family of Jaime Poipito Junior and, uh, Mam Glor- Gloria Imintoya.
Okay, uh, it's been moved.
Second.
Councilor De Castro, seconded by, seconded by all. Uh.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Councilor Oscar Boling.
May request that will include also that, uh. Mister Chair?
Yes, 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 go ahead, Councilor Boling.
Pwede bang isama natin din 'yung isang empleyado natin sa engineering?
Ay, sino po ba?
Na-napatay din nung nagkailangan lang.
Yes po, um. Uh, actually, ano pong mangalan? Para ko ma-ano pa na sa record?
Kino ba ba yung nasa engineering din?
Rogilin, kaba, Kabalyero.
Rogilin.
Rogilin nga, Kabalyero.
Di ba meron din yung?
Kabalyero.
Also, I think, uh, so only that, yun lang po, I think, di ba dalawa yun?
Yung taga.
Uh, yes, uh, pero, sir, Mister Chair, uh, we could just include everyone because, uh. We'll just, uh, anyway, this is a, our expressing of our, uh.
Yes.
Deep sympathy to the brave family, Mister Chair. Perhaps, uh. We could just also ask the secretariat to gather, uh, data on the. Uh, persons concerned who had their untimely. On account of this, uh, pandemic, Mister Chair. I move that the said matter be approved by the body.
Okay, uh, please state out, Madam Secretariat, of course, the suggestion of Councilor Oscar Boling to include. Uh, that employee and to check all the data that, uh. For the people that, uh, that were, that passed. So, this approved by Councilor De Castro.
Clarification lang, Mister Chair.
Yes, Councilor.
Si paret yung kay, delete, uh, board member Humilde, tapos yung iba, halo-halo, uh, sama-sama na sila.
No, I, I, I suggest that it be separated, uh, each person, uh, for each resolution.
Isa, isa.
Yes, uh, yes, uh.
Bagay, okay, para may, kung bibigay sa kanila.
Para may bigay na pamilya. Uh, it's a very good, uh, para at least, uh, we, we support and we give to our fellow L G O. Uh.
Yes, uh. As part of our family, Mister Chair.
It's been moved by Councilor De Castro, second, any second? Shall we second, second by all?
Second, daw.
By all, uh, for the adoption of the said resolutions. Any amendments? Hearing none, the said resolutions are hereby adopted. Condolences to the family of, uh. The Mentoya family and the Dito family, and as well as the families, uh. The ones that, uh, moved on from the engineering department. Uh, thank you very much for helping us, uh. Helping the L G O family achieving goal goals. So, we proceed, next item, Madam Secretariat?
Third and final reading. Of the ordinance providing for the protection against discrimination of all workers. Involved in the fight against COVID nineteen, providing penalty violation thereof for other purposes.
Okay na ba ito? Uh, okay na 'yung penalty?
Yes, sir.
Ano ang problema? So, and yung process, paano magreklamo, ganun ba? Meron na, Mam Luz? Complete, I mean, yung protection against discrimination. Anyway, who's the sponsor of this?
Chair.
Mam Luz, who is the sponsor of this, uh, ordinance?
Si Carol yata.
Actually, may, actually, sir, may, may, may ano yan, may. Circular from the D I N G.
Uh, Councilor Apol, sorry, uh, you were reading, Han?
Yes, sir, ako po 'yung sponsor.
Yes po, uh.
Si Apol pala.
Any, what is the pleasure?
There are no more questions, Mister Chair, regarding this ordinance. I move for the adoption.
Okay, it has been moved by Councilor Apol Bakay for the. Enactment of the said ordinance. Under the second reading, seconded by Councilor Sezon. Councilor Segundera, Councilor Rabago. Uh, any obje- uh, Councilor De Leon, any objection? Amendment, discussion? Hearing none, the said ordinance is hereby enacted. Thank you very much, Councilor Apol Bakay.
You.
Just. Uh, please check, Madam Secretariat, the sponsored by Councilor Apol Bakay. So, and next item?
Uh, next item is the updating of the Piggery ordinance.
Uh. Yung, yung pangalan, yun 'yung title?
Yes, sir.
Oh, an ordinance?
An ord- our ordinance updating the Piggery ordinance.
That's the, that's the title?
Yun po yung, kasi nilagay na ng title, sir.
Kaya kung updating yan, di ba may amendments? Amending na lang.
Oo.
Di ba, di bagay 'yung updating yata?
Let's, uh.
Amendment, yun, kung may, kung may provision yan, na nag-a-update or whatever, na may pinalitan na provision ng original ordinance. Amendment yang, uh, yun.
It has the same thought naman, updating and, uh, amending, I think it's the same thought. So, what is the pleasure, Councilor Ranoy? Regarding the Piggery ordinance? Third and final reading na ito? Approved na ba natin?
Approved na natin, Mister Chair, dahil may nakakuha na kaming budget dyan.
Okay, uh, I believe na the sec- our, our hardworking secretariat also. Correlated the A S F ordinance and this Piggery ordinance, so. To be in sync, to be able to help our performers, um, start again from, uh. Uh, from the problems that they've encountered the past few years. So, it has been moved by Councilor Robert Ranoy for the enactment of the said ordinance.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Radoc, Councilor Sezon, Councilor De Leon, Councilor Segundera, Councilor Apol Bakay. For the enactment of the said ordinance, so amending. Amending the, an ordinance, amending the Piggery ordinance. Tama po, Councilor Radoc, tama po?
Uh, siguro, uh, an, an, ordinance, amending, ordinance number so-and-so, also known as the Piggery code, ano ba yun? Piggery ordinance.
Yes, I think naman we have the same thoughts, so Mam Luz, just. Uh, pick the best, ano lang, the best, uh, sounding and the best, naaintindihan. Uh, ordinance, na simple lang. Any objection? Any amendments? Hearing none, the said ordinance is hereby enacted. Congratulations, Councilor Ranoy, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Next item po?
Uh, announcement.
Yes po, go ahead.
So, before the announcement of our receipt of days, ang ganyan pangalawigan. I would like to, I would like to. Reiterate the invitation of our city budget officer for our. Budget forum for the budget year twenty twenty-two, bukas po via Zoom. I ne-invite po niya lahat ng S P members, kung pwede po kayong umatin via Zoom naman po ito. Para po mag-deliberate on our proposals for the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget of the city. Ang link po ipapadala na lang po sa bawat offices po niyo bukas. And then, we have also our.
Actually, magandang makapunta po tayo, because if i-implement po yung mandanas. So, we would be a billion, billion peso. Budget city, so magandang malaman po natin kung ano po yung mga magbabago. So. Proceed, Madam Secretariat?
Ano ration?
Two, two ba? Two oka?
Sir, two P M po.
Two P M. Via Zoom.
Via Zoom.
Okay, go ahead, proceed.
So, under, uh, another announcement po, nareceived na po natin ang kopya ng Sangguniang Panalabigan Resolution Number. Four eight nine dash twenty twenty-one. And four eight, four nine zero dash twenty twenty-one, declaring the our supplemental A I P number two and our. Supplemental budget number two. Enacted within the conferred powers of the Sangguniang Pandoson. And we have also received, uh, Sanggulang Panalabigan Resolution Number four nine one dash the twenty ten, twenty-one. Declaring ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight of the city of Alaminos. Uh. Title that ordinance creating one position under the executive department and abolishing one position. Upgrading one position, creating three positions under the legislative of the local government unit. Enacted within the conferred powers of the Sangguniang Pandoson. Also Sanggulang Panalabigan Resolution Number four nine two dash twenty twenty-one. Declaring ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine, titled that ordinance regulating the use of. Bugs and police kill in the home in the city of Alaminos and prescribing penalties therefore enacted within the conferred powers. Of the Sangguniang Pandoson. And lastly.
Congratulations to, uh, Councilor Michelle for that, uh, for that ordinance. She was the author and the sponsor. Lastly, go ahead.
And lastly, advance happy birthday greetings to our city councilor. Councilor Michelle S. Segundera and. Ligan ng Magabaranget President Raoul Di Bakay, who will celebrate their birthday on June twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, happy birthday, Councilor Michelle.
Happy birthday. Birthday.
Okay, happy birthday from our, from the legislative.
Happy birthday, happy birthday.
Tira ang diet mo niyan, ano yan?
Di mali. Thank you po.
In behalf of the legislative family, happy birthday, Councilor Michelle, happy birthday, Kapraul.
Ngayon ha, di pa nakawit?
We, we wish you all the best this coming year and, uh, stay beautiful and handsome, Kap- Kapraul and stay beautiful. Uh, Councilor Michelle. So, any words from the, from the August badi? Any birthday greetings?
Happy birthday.
I would like to volunteer, Councilor Jojo, Mister Chair, uh, to, today speaking for all of us.
Any, you know?
Happy birthday to you.
Kanta natin, kanta. One, two, three, council. Go.
One, two, three, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday, Mam Michelle and.
Kapraul.
Si Councilor Jojo ng magbigay ng birthday wish.
Oo, tayo daw kakanta, siya daw. Councilor Jojo, any, ano, wise advice? Of, uh, wisdom?
Birthday wish, birthday wish.
Ayaw, uh, ino means ayaw. Happy birthday again, Councilor Michelle. So, any, any announcements po from our, uh, fellow counselors? Colleagues? Mam Luz, any announcements?
Wala na po, sir, so far.
May problema daw si Councilor Ranoy, tsaka si Councilor Alfred. Wala pa daw internet sa building, ayusin na natin yung. Internet sa building natin.
Uh, for the information, sir, everybody, naipalagay na po na yung initial, um. Wearing para sa P L P T, I guess, I hope, with it this week, may tagay na rin.
Next week, pidi na tayo doon.
First.
If may, uh, concerns pa po regarding our transfer, yung mga, I believe may mga. Tiles ata, na nasita, or may tumutulo pag umuulan, uh, please notify na lang po, uh, Mam Jo. Uh, Mam Jo Tablang, or Mam Luz, para alam natin kung ano'y papagawa at papaayos. So, any other announcements? Councilor Carol, you okay? Councilor Apol Bakay, looming, uh, Councilor Bakay, bagay pa na sa inyo? Okay, tumala na. Councilor Bernabe, shall we adjourn?
Yes, Mister Presiding Officer, if there are no more items to discuss, I move for the adjournment of our session for today.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Bernabe, seconded by Councilor Segundera, Councilor Apol Bakay, Councilor Ranoy, Councilor Oscar Boling. Councilor De Leon for the adjournment of today's regular session. And now called the Sanggulang Pangolongso regular session for the month of. June. Endure. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you.
Marami pong salamat.
Thank you po.
Thank you, bye.
Bakit si Mam Apo lang ganda-ganda niya?
Oo.
Pm, blooming siya oh.
Nasa opit ako.
Paki- tangalin, board?
Paki-tanbo na tayo.
Bagay, bagay, bagay mo yung salamin.
Bagay yung royal blue, ay, yung salamin. Yung salamin pala.
Oo.
Paki-offer. P M, looming match.